Good evening and welcome to the West Jordan Planning Commission meeting for March 15th, 2016. We have six members of the commission present this evening. Commissioner Sapolsky is excused. Jumping right into our agenda, we have one item on our consent calendar, which is the minutes from our March 1st meeting. Commissioner Pack.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the minutes for March 1st, 2016, as written in the staff report.
Motion by Commissioner Pack, second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Two public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first one is the Scott rezon, 7544 South, 2200 West. Rezoning point 51 acres from R18B and R110B to R18C. Annette Scott is the applicant. We'll turn the time over to you.
I have three parcels of property there, as you can see. The house is on an R110. The garage is on an R18. And then there's this piece on the side that kind of looks like a little L shape. It's an R18 also. I would like to divide it in half and turn both of them into an R18. And that's what I'm proposing we do today.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? We're quiet lunch tonight. Thank you. Mr. Gardner.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Laws. Ms. Scott's property is just south of Jordan Meadows Park. East is west of 2200 West and in this, I don't have a pointer, so... So the South Jordan Canal runs right next to 2200 West. And as Ms. Scott said, she owns these three parcels of property. I think it's ramming up parcels that have been left over from past subdivision practices. You can see it's in the medium density land use designation. And from this larger map, you can see how the R110 line runs through the city. And it runs right at Ms. Scott's back door, as she said, and kind of comes around. And what she would like to do is take this piece and make it R18 so it matches. And then consolidate the lots through the subdivision process and have two buildable lots. Actually, the existing home will stay and she'll have one more lot to build upon. Staff supports this. I think it's, you know, it is, what is in the area, south of the park, is all R18 across the street. And so, and staff feels it meets all the criteria for a zone change and recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me on this?
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson.
Larry, if this is approved, would it just require a lot line adjustment or would you have to go through a subdivision?
No, she'd have to do a minor subdivision on this property. I bet that that would be administrative only. It wouldn't have to come back to the commissions.
Thank you.
It just dawned on me that the area to the left there that we talked about, I think it's been a couple of years now, we were dedicating part of the park there. Did we go with a C-size home for that as well? Do you remember?
The new homes.
Oh, there are new homes there.
Yeah, there are C-size homes. I think they're all, I think there's one left to be built or it might be being built right now.
Time flies.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, excellent. Any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Pack.
Thank you. So then the lot size would be in line with the adjacent properties.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess my question would just be, the access to the subdivided properties, is it going to be from the street to the west or 2200?
The existing will be 2200. The new lot would have to come off this road.
Okay. So it's really splitting it in two, and one face is east and one face is west?
Yeah.
Excellent. This was known as a public hearing. The process for our public hearing is when open, we would invite anybody who would like to comment on this item up to the podium. If you would kindly give your name and contact information, and the event city staff would like to follow up if you want any of your comments or questions. You have three minutes to make your comments. You'll hear a little bell go off, which would ask you to wrap up your comments. And then we'll go from there. So with that, I'll open the public hearing for this item. There's anybody who would like to comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. Commissioner Hanson.
I'm ready for motion. That's all right. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to produce on the property located at 7544 South, 2200 West, from R-1-10B, single-family residential, 10,000 square foot lot minimum, house size B, and R-1-8B, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot lot minimum, house size B, to R-1-8C, single-family residential, 8,000 square foot lot minimum, house size C, zone.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, second by Commissioner Heiner. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Last item on our agenda is Oak Ridge Park, 8200 South, 6700 West, considering a future land use plan amendment for 40 acres from PF to medium density and rezoning the PF to R18C. Boer Company, Spencer Moffett is the applicant. The time is now yours.
Thank you. I'm Spencer Moffett with the Boer Company. And Larry's much better at this than I am, but I'll give you a brief overview. We are out in the area. We've got some property to the east of this subject property that we're developing in the Highlands, Longview North, Phase 1, 2, and 3. We've been out there the last five years and have enjoyed working in West Jordan, got a good feel for the area, the buyers, and what people are seeking out in the area. An opportunity was presented to us to purchase this property from the school district, and we jumped on the opportunity. It's a place that we know and that we've enjoyed working and we think is going to be successful going into the future. With that background, I'm here seeking a general plan, or I guess it's not, a future land use plan amendment, from public facilities to medium density residential, and then at the same time going from the zoning, or rezoning from the PF to the R18C. Just a little bit of context, and I'm sure Larry will go over this, as to why we're seeking that specific zone. We've got the Serengeti Apartments to the north and Bacchus Highway to the west, as well as some denser product. We thought, I felt that the R18 is a good fit for the area, that really that 8,000 square foot lot seems to be nowhere most of the people going out to this area, what the type of product they're looking to be in. We've been a little bit smaller than that in Longview. We've been, you know, 65 to 7500 square feet. Really, the feedback we get is if I could be at, you know, 7,000, 8,000 square feet and get a third car garage, we'd have it made in the shade. You know, with that R18 zone, I think we're able to get that third car garage, which really is kind of the holy grail, so to speak, for these buyers who are coming to this area where they can, you know, hit a good price on their house and also get a third car garage. Anyway, that's just a general context as to what we're seeking to do out here. Let Larry kind of go over it, and then I'm happy to answer any questions should you happen.
Questions for the applicant at this time? We are a quiet group this evening.
Hey.
Thank you. Back to you, Larry.
Give some context. This 50-acre piece over the Jordan School District, as Spencer said, is on the north is Serengeti Springs, a multifamily development. Directly to the east is a portion that's in the Highlands, master plan community titled Orchard Heights, yet to be developed. To the south, both of these, and also to the west, are part of the now expired Jordan Hills Villages, master plan, the Oaks, and then the Sycamores. These lots directly across, directly to the west on U-111 are about 5,000 square foot lots. To the south are about eight. They get a little bit larger as you go into the interior of the Oaks up to, but they average around 8,8500 square feet. This is Sunset Ridge Middle School and the LDS Church right there. The future land use map, as you can see, has, from the last general plan, has it public facilities because of the intent of the district at that time to build a high school. This wash traverses kind of, well, actually comes up. It was cut off here and that comes up and it empties and it goes. As you can see, there's kind of a large amount of spoils here and the wash kind of goes onto the north side and flows out and comes into the Highlands, just a little bit north of the LDS Church. And so what the applicant is asking to do is amend the future land use map and change the zoning to R18 from public facilities to that residential zoning. This 10-acre piece will be retained by the school district for a future elementary school. When that will be, I have no idea, but the district has been very good out here about acquiring land before it becomes prohibitively expensive. And they want to keep what they can. The reason they're disposing of this, and as I said in the pre-meeting, it doesn't meet their model for high schools at this time with soccer, baseball, football, lacrosse. It takes about 65 acres, 60 to 65 acres to really operate it in a manner that the school district feels comfortable. And so they're looking somewhere else, either in the city or maybe just outside of the city for a larger site. This is a conceptual plan. I don't realize the planning commission is not voting on the subdivision tonight, but it will come back eventually if the zoning is approved. One thing I want to point out is the wash will be redirected or be kept in the site. And it'll run along the rear of these lots that run on this road, and it'll run next to a road. Our engineer had a project that did something similar to this in Draper. And it also, the engineering department likes that because it gives more chance for stormwater to percolate and recharge whatever groundwater there is there, rather than going into a pipe and rushing to the Jordan River. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, Nate, but this seems to be the new model, is try to keep these washes as open as possible. And then, of course, it'll terminate at the school district. They have no interest in having a wash in a playground for some reason. We tend to talk them into, you know. And with that, the trail necessarily won't traverse through the subdivision, but it will, we will make accommodations along 8200 South for that. Staff has reviewed this and feels like because of where this piece of property is adjacent to multifamily U-111, that it really, the R18 does, you know, meet the criteria for changing the land use map and the zoning. And does recommend approval of this application at this time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for staff?
Thank you.
Go for it.
So everything to the immediate south that borders, well, I guess it borders the elementary school property, but we have a lot, it appears that almost everything to the, with the exception of the middle school there, is low density to the south and to the east. And the north is high density and the west is medium density. Is that right? Am I reading the map?
Yes, yes. You're right. And actually, these lots in the Sycamore really don't meet our definition of low density, but they are.
But that's because that was a PC, BRD, something?
And it was low density for the Jordan Hills Villages. You know, they had some, a lot, the Jordan Hills Villages had a lot of 4,000 and 5,000 square foot lots. And so, and you're right, this was at one time low density. And a year and a half ago, the city council changed that to medium density. And that particularly, the feeling was along the U-111 corridor that that is most appropriate. Now, as you go farther west, I agree, and probably everything that's left on the west side of U-111, in my opinion, should be less low density or very low density. Particularly low density as you get farther up into the foothills because they become much more difficult to develop. I hope that answered your question.
It does.
So I just, something came to mind when you were showing me that how that wash would run along the backside of those houses. What's the volume of water that moves through that? I just, I just had this image of the canal that burst over in Murray.
Well, it's dry about 99.9% of the time, so it's very intermittent. And it only handles, you know, stormwater. But according to our models and everything, it does, it will and can have pretty, pretty heavy flows. In fact, just to the, I think it's to the east of there through Bloomfield Heights, we had one flood that came through there. I won't call it flood, but it stayed in the channel, but it washed a lot of the rock boulders that are supposed to stabilize the channel, washed them out of place and caused some damage there. So it can have a fair amount of water and if at a fast pace.
Commissioner Heiner.
What does that look like as far as will there be grass planted in there or will there be natural landscape left? Or how is it going to be to direct the water flow?
At this point, that hasn't been determined. It's just kind of laid out as a, as a location. But from some of the discussions that we've had, we would foresee a channel that probably is lined with rocks. And then the side slopes and the banks would be most likely grassed with trees. That's what we've discussed.
Will it be directed out of the subdivision and over to the school site or out around?
It could be either deflected around the school site or piped underneath. I think that'll be probably a developer's determination. And the reason I say that is because just to the, again, to the, to the east of this, there's another elementary school. Is that Falcon Hill, Falcon Ridge? Fox Hollow? The same channel goes through that site and it's piped underneath, so it's kind of hard to force this applicant to do something really different that we haven't done previously. We do know that the, from the directly, that the school district would rather just have it piped underneath their property if it's going to go through their property.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson.
You said, I realize we're just looking at land use and zoning and not the site plan. But my concern would be, whether leaving it open, would it be fenced? Because that's really, if you've got a large flow of water, that's going to bring kids immediately.
We don't see, see it being fenced. It hasn't been fenced anywhere else in its whole path through the city. And it goes through a number of other subdivisions in the city at this time.
Thank you.
This was also agendized as a public hearing, so I'll open that up. If there's anybody who would like to comment on this particular item. A whole lot of anybody's left, but... Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring back the commission. See, this is the quietest I've seen us in months. Commissioner Hanson.
It's the most you've seen me talk. I am not a proponent of this for one reason. And that is, we do have the low density around it, but we seem to be doing so much of the R18. And we are a city with a very big advantage of having a large amount of property to the west of our current city that is undeveloped. And if we continue on this path of R18, that's all we're going to have. And I think that even in medium density, you can have the 110, you can have the 112, I believe. And as we go up the hill, these are going to be sites that are going to be wanted. I mean, they're going to give a view of the valley. And if we're just going to continue to constantly do the R18, I mean, we just had an R5 for us a month ago, which we denied or sent a denial forward. But I'm concerned that we're just going to keep sticking with this R18. And I think that we need to look to the future and to what we have to offer with that excess property. Unless Kennicott decides to expand Daybreak, there's no other city that's going to be able to build west of their current city boundaries. And, and we have that opportunity. And if we continue with the R18, that's what we're going to end up with. And I feel like we're just, you know, cutting off our nose to spider face. So I'm not a proponent of this. If it were an R110, I would feel better about it with a larger house size.
I think, I think I agree with Judy. Commissioner Hanson, I think that, I know we have some medium density around it, and a couple of these are more higher density than what we would call a real medium density. But at the end of the day, I think we are, you know, we're trying to throw another 140-something houses into an area that just doesn't seem to, I mean, I, I guess it could kind of match across the street to U-111. But I really do have difficulties with the fact that we're trying to do R18 with the 8,000, you know, with the smaller lots. And I just wonder what's going to happen with an R18. I'm trying to, I'm trying to imagine, and that's partly my inability to conjure up an imagination. But to put it, I've seen some R18s, and maybe you can help me with this. On a lot of R18s, isn't that about what a lot of those Daybreak houses are, is R18 or they are 1?
They're a lot smaller than that.
Are they a lot smaller than?
They're about half, well, depending on what you're envisioning, they're about half that size. The other 45 to 5 at some of the largest sizes, so...
I'm just trying to imagine a three-car garage on an 8,000 square foot. And I'm trying to figure out what development would come close to that.
If you go at Longview, just to the east, as Spencer said, they've developed, I think, 60% of the lots have a three-car garage. And it works, so...
And they were at 7,000, they kind of ranged to 7, I don't know if you would have...
7,000 square feet or about this size?
Yeah, so this would be 1,000 square feet on average larger than what you see in Longview.
A quarter acre is what, 10?
Something to keep in mind, those of you that are considering voting against this or you're not in favor of it, what criteria does it not currently meet as presented in the plan? While you're illuminating on that, Commissioner Pack?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a segue into what I wanted to mention for staff and for Mr. Thorup legally. This was prepared as a hybrid motion. And we were saying we feel more comfortable taking it separately for the future land use map and then also the zoning map amendment motion, which also in the decision type noticing that it's a hybrid of a legislative and judicial action. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding where we have discretion in terms of what we like and don't like versus what is already allowed in the code that we really don't have.
No, this is quasi-judicial. That was my mistake on the decision.
Okay, so both the land use
Yes.
map amendment and the zoning map amendment, they're both quasi, which one?
Judicial.
Both quasi-judicial.
They have specific criteria that need to be met.
That's, okay, thank you. So in a way, that limits a little bit of what we can say about what we would like to see versus what is already allowed to be seen. Is that correct? Because basically if the city code allows it, even if we...
Unless it can be justified or it's not meeting criteria as presented.
Right, so as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we need to have some objective criteria on what is not met versus subjectively saying what we would want. Okay, thank you.
I think I'm thinking the same issue.
Well, and I can, I can legitimately say on page four, finding D, that modifying the land use map's not an overall improvement by going to medium density because everything else to the east of it's low. I can also, I can also justify in the criteria too that it's not necess, it might be compatible with the, with the adjacent properties, but I could also say that it's not, so I'm still, I'm still...
Unless you can argue that lot size is incompatible, it's the same use, so I guess we're good towards use than lot size, so...
Commissioner Hanson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I threw my mic out. I did have a question. Isn't this where they're going to have to upgrade the sewer system? This is this?
Yes, yes, they'll have to upgrade the sewer system downstream for about half of the lots, about 80 of the lots.
And that will be at their expense, not the city's.
Yes, and they're fully aware of that.
You say that's only going to be on half the lots?
Half of it drains in one system and half of it drains in another, so...
One system is adequate, the other one isn't?
Barely adequate, yeah. Because on the modeling, when they did the utility modeling for this area, it was always 50 acres was modeled as a school site which uses substantially or impacts the system less.
Further questions, comments, discussion? Commissioner Heiner.
I have one comment. The property to the west, those are smaller lots, correct? Those 6,000, 5,000?
5,000, yeah, directly to the west.
Those are 5,000. My thought is it's an actual upgrade from that part of it, and then we're actually increasing the lot size and not cramming every houses into a smaller area too, so, just a thought.
On that note, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I'll move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the general plan, future land use map for 40 acres located at approximately 6,700 West, 8,200 South, from public facilities to medium density residential.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Laws, second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So this, this is just the land use map?
Correct.
Aye, I'll vote yes on that one.
Any opposed?
The land use, aye.
Just the land use. I think we got six ayes out of that. Motion carries six to zero. And I'll follow that up with a second one. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone 40 acres located at approximately 6,700 West, 8,200 South, from PF, public facilities, to R18C, zone.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Laws, second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion. Commissioner Hanson.
I will be in voting against this with criteria two because some of the surrounding land on the land use map shows low density, which gives them then the opportunity to come in again and change this so they can have an R18. The R18 is what bothers me. And criteria, the criteria two says compatible land use relationships and does not adversely affect adjacent properties. And I think this will.
There is no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails, 3 to 3. Commissioners Pack, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Hanson passing the, passing the dissenting vote. If we have a fifty-fifty split on a motion.
The support is a, correct me if I'm wrong, a negative recommendation to council. Is that correct?
Well, the motion failed. If somebody wants to propose a negative, you can vote on that.
Commissioner?
Thank you. So, if the future land use map then does receive the, you know, the positive recommendation moves forward, but yet the zoning map amendment doesn't get that, can, can someone help explain to me then the conundrum that, that this is in, that the future land use has been changed, but then the zoning map isn't consistent with the future land use map?
The zoning map wouldn't change. It'll still be medium density because you can have a ten thousand square foot lot in medium density.
We could still do R one ten in a medium density.
Right. It's, Commissioner Pack, uh, typically the, the zoning map and the general plan, future land use map should be the same.
Right.
But they don't necessarily have to be. So, if, if you're concerned about that, you know, that technically the council could change it. Um, and, uh, without changing the zoning, although that's fairly unlikely that they would do that, um, general plan's an advisory document. But as far as developing the land, the entitlement, the entitled uses of the property, you have to look at the zoning. And if the zoning remained PF, then they couldn't go ahead and subdivide it and put homes on there. So, I don't know if that helps.
No, it does because that was my conundrum is if, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
And in two years, this will pop up when we go to clean up all those pockets of incompatibilities between the future land use.
I mean, if, if, if we amend the general land use map, the way I, the way I see this, we amend the gen- general land use map, which we voted in favor of that, the land use map says that it ought to be medium density. We're just saying not one, R one eight. The PF stays there and somebody else can come back in under the land use map or they can come back in and ask for a different zoning. Is that the way I, that, that's the way I read that. That's the way I think that.
Anybody interested in proposing an alternative motion? Commissioner?
Is it possible to continue the discussion then? I, I'd just like to get a little more feedback on why, um, let's say Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Green are saying no and why the other three commissioners are saying yes. Can I get a little bit more, can we get a little bit more information, reasoning? And maybe there's something that, uh, all of us aren't considering?
As in personal reasons, why?
Well, we'll, we'll just, uh, I mean, basically, yes, why? What, what are the, the factors? Uh, I, I know with the dissenting, it's, uh, we need to write criteria two. And finding the, uh.
Which is irrelevant at this point.
Yeah, sorry, that's regarding that. So, it's basically criteria two, right? That is the hang up.
Can you go back to the slide, Larry, that shows the, uh, the zoning densities surrounding this particular property? So, that's what we've got now, the distribution of it. And as we looked at how that, uh, how an R one eight would fit in compatibility wise with the surrounding zoning.
If it helps, so we've already discussed this at length. The Sycamores, these are all five thousand square foot lots.
Right.
These right here, uh, just, uh, measured these, these are at, uh, seven thousand eight hundred, uh, square feet, these lots. And so, uh, hopefully that, obviously these, these are, I think these are tens right here. So, hopefully that paints it a little bit of a clearer picture as far as the, the surrounding context.
I'll go back to Commissioner Heiner's statement that, yes, this is a, it's a nice step up from the other surrounding properties. Uh, it seems to give a pretty good balance to that area.
So, if we have eight thousand square foot lots, I just don't understand, you know, and I don't know if anyone else has this question, but just to make sure to clarify, when we're saying that a developer can come back in, because it is medium density. It could go lower than the eight thousand square feet.
Yeah, present the applicant is asking for.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Currently up the, the application for eight thousand square foot.
Right.
Commissioner?
So, just to give my few cents on this, I think that this creates a, a nice kind of transition from the, 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 the smaller homes into the larger homes that are going to come with the, the surrounding areas because we're just talking about kind of our preference. Regarding criteria two, if I'm understanding Commissioner Hanson's dissent on this is that we don't want to take the chance that somebody in the future is going to come along and request a change in what's already out there, right? But we're not considering what might happen. We can't consider what possibly happened. And should it happen, we have the ability to deny that motion at that time anyways, right?
Absolutely.
So, right now, this doesn't, to me, seem to contradict criteria two. We're in line with criteria two and if something should come along in the future, we can discuss it at that time. But for the motion we have in front of us right now, criteria two seems to be met. That's how I see this.
Can, can I interject one thought about? Now, remember the R one zone, R one eight zoning is a minimum. It can't go below that. I've never seen one of these. You can see several of these lots and it usually is about forty percent of the lots are R one eight. You'll have several in the subdivision that are tens, elevens, twelve thousand square feet on the upper end of nine thousand. Just the way it lays out with roads, corner lots, all corner lots are required to be one thousand square feet larger. And so, they'll have, there already you've got, oh, I can't even count them, maybe twenty, twenty-five homes that'll be nine thousand or more. And so, just keep that in mind, the R one eight is a minimum. It's not an average as Scott was saying is across the street. And so, the average will be, they're, with Fox Creek across, I think we averaged in the ten, about the ten thousand, and I think it'll be about the same for this as far as lot sizes. You know, but the, the eight's a minimum, but it never does, it never does work out to where they're averaging. It's, it's well above the eight thousand, so. I just want to interject that.
Thank you.
Question I have is what is the minimum size, uh, in the minim- in the, uh, medium density lots? What's the smallest you can have? Is that eight thousand or?
It is eight, yeah. Yeah, R one eight, uh, up to R one ten. Uh, anything lar- or anything larger than an R one ten would be in the low density category.
Thank you.
The, the area across sixty-seven hundred west, I, I guess that's a church that's just kind of in the middle of that, that low density area.
Yeah, that was the Vanguard Church, yeah.
The, that, that, that whole stretch along sixty-seven from eighty-two to seventy-eight, what's, what's its zone now? Is it R one ten?
No, it's L, L S F R. It's a west side planning area zone, so it's a low single, low density single.
So, that's the west side planning area that we've got the, the really screwy stuff that we're going to have to fix anyways.
Oh, it's not screwy, it's wonderful.
It's the west side planning area that we can't use here.
That one works.
Yeah, it did.
Actually, that is part of the Highlands.
Is this part of the Highlands?
So, it, it is active and, and it will be developed out as, as, uh, L S F R.
So, that is part of the Highlands?
It is.
That corner is, okay.
That forty acre piece.
No, they're not going back down for a game on that anyways.
No, they're not go- they're just going to develop it under the, the, uh, L S F R, under the Highlands master.
I don't think criteria is in China, in general, really at all here. I don't think so here.
So, for L S F R, what's the square footage of the lots there? I'll ask the question. I don't have no idea.
Well, it's performance based, so it's going to.
No, because it's in the west side planning area, that's, that, that's got some of the buy ups and buy downs.
And, and the, the interesting thing is that it'll probably end up a little more dense in the W S P A than what they're asking for in this R one eight. That's the way it's been coming around about, you know, Longview's been a little more dense than a standard R one eight lot.
Just, just because of the buy ups and those kind of things?
Great, thank you for the clarifications.
Anybody interested in proposing and opposing?
Well, I, I think we did, I still, I think we'd still end up with a three-three tie.
I think so. I'd be willing to reconsider. I, I had a misconception.
You can, well, you voted against it. You can always do a motion to reconsider.
Or we can just, or I'll just throw out another motion. Uh, recommending that, uh, we forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone forty acres, uh, as previously mentioned.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Law, second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion. Commissioner Pack?
Well, thank you. And I see there's pros and cons either way. And as I was laying the evidence, it looks like I had a, anyway, with additional clarification and discussion, it satisfies the hang up that, that I had. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to two with Commissioner Green and Hanson casting the negative votes. Uh, we did have one more discussion point, which was the, a representative from planning commission for the community development block grant, uh, committee. Um, Commissioner Green is going to see if his schedule will accommodate that and, uh, and try to rectify tomorrow on that one, so, thank you.
Dan, if he's unable to, uh, I have done it prior, but, uh, no, he's unable to.
And we have a, we have a second potential candidate and I, Commissioner Hanson, thank you both. Commissioner?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to, uh, publicly recognize Mr. Thorup. I understand that, uh, this would be his last meeting with us. Just wanted to say thank you for all of your great legal advice. It's been a pleasure working with you.
He's free of us.
Well, thank you.
Any further? Entertained motion adjourned.
Slowed.
Anybody opposed to that? Thank you, Commissioner Pack. We stand adjourned until April, April fifth, two thousand sixteen.